We can begin our policy and curriculum meeting for December eighth, twenty twenty five. The agenda is tonight, we have it first election of committee person, and then we have some items for curriculum and then two policies for review. That brings us to election of the committee chairperson.
And nominate Dan Wisner as chairman person.
You can say hi.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Can we also take other nominations or? Yeah, so I'd like to nominate Sophia, who's been on the board the longest and intimately familiar with their policy.
Any other nominations? Yes, we'll flow with nominations without any other nominations. We don't, as we, Robert's rules don't have to be as perfect here. They're not acting, but try to follow as much as possible. So with the first nomination with Dan, I guess we'll do a roll call. We go from right to left. So Jeremiah, Dan. Jason. I'm not a member of the committee. I'm not sure. Oh, you have, you can, yeah, if you are, so as a member of the committee, I mean, any member of the board can join the committee on any given night, and if you haven't vote, you can also not vote, but then you'd be typically sitting in drought to indicate.
Move to table one until the end of the week.
I don't think, given under your circumstances, I'm sure we have people on that as a roll call, they want to get down, listen, we come back to it.
So who's chair?
Honestly, I'm, I'm willing to leave my name off the table.
So can we have another vote? We have another vote just to, so we're voting, because we do the majority of the committee, you know, when I say what policy committee can do, the majority of the committee does vote. So we have another roll call for Dan.
Wisner.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. So then that brings us to curriculum.
Sir.
All right, thanks for having me for.
Yeah, last month we did, you know, had an update from the middle school with some, some of the changes from the middle school for twenty five, twenty six, and I mean, the high school joining us to share updates on some of the changes to the high school, many of which we were talking about this time last year. Thanks. So one of the big things this year, you're going to see the students are there waiting in the wings. We made some good changes last year. A lot of things are going back to choice. I don't want to say we're building as we fly, but certain things when it comes down to what we're working on, there are adjustments. We're learning a lot as we go. But when it comes down to it, what we're really starting to see is our seniors are taking this opportunity to enjoy some options and running with it. They're actually sharing with us today. Briefly what they're doing, and they're making some big contributions to the community, and they're learning a great deal as well. But then there's things as we go that we're learning from this past year. We learned so far for the first third of the school year that will help inform smaller choices as we go through Christmas break and into next year, but we're learning as we go. So some of these things you ask with questions, and it will probably not saying, yeah, we're already thinking about that, but there's things that we're, we're growing with as well. We're getting back to the basics of getting students engaged, getting students communicating, and getting out any amount of community. So without further ado, here's, we're going to go through our graduation requirements, talk a lot about, about late start or early release. If y'all remember that in the spring. Our current MTSS similar to what Sean, Mr. Lynch was doing at middle school, what we're doing with that, a little different at the high school, because it's the structure of the time, but it's more focused at the high school on certain content areas because of the time we have. And then algebra LA, student performance trends, what we're seeing, and then let the kids button up with their senior seminar. Here's what we had. So the graduation requirements, we looked at, here's what our high school seniors, for the most part, are doing at Cudstowns. We talk about. That's specific to the one graduation requirement that is graduate readiness. Yep, we have, we have the graduate readiness component, which is equivalent to one credit. Some are sort of confidence. So when you take a look here, here's what our students are doing. Senior seminar, we have four, we have forty students are participating. We have twenty two students in BCT, which is a really strong number. We have nineteen students internships, ten college study, eleven students on AP courses. So if you look at why at eleven students, a lot of those eleven, we started out with fifty one or so doing senior seminar, then we had seniors double down more AP courses. So that's kind of their, their pathway if you. There are many students taking AP courses that also have senior seminar, but this is students who have a heavier load of AP that didn't fit their schedule. We didn't want it to take priority over. I think you beat me up. Okay, there is, this was approved last year. This is current schedule. This was given more choice, and as you see, as they get towards more of their senior year, the options allow them to invest themselves more into these experiences that are presented to about senior seminar. And taking college courses, doubling down on co-op's of BCTC, taking an internship. While we're small and sometimes it does create some little issues, by and large, creating some of that often at the tail end of their senior year allows more breadth where they can go out experience, put to good use what they're doing. Am I clicking you or are you looking for me? You're the man. When it doesn't work, I do, but then. Thanks. New courses. So here's what we put in place for this year. Again, there's forty students senior seminar, AP precap, which is fascinating, but that twenty percent of most of an eleven grade class is taking an AP precap. We have fourteen students right now taking AP Cal, which is double the more than we have ever had. But now because they had that extra time slot, they, they, in their senior schedule, there's time to get that study hall, which they may need knowing they're taking these extra, they're pushing themselves further and harder. Active lifestyle, which is a really neat course. She calls it a gym thirty five is what she pushes out every, every Monday. There are students who have Mr. Cello's. Essentially, it's open gym, open weight room, door connections for kids to qualify. And truly, they love it. So we looked at, and thanks for the board, because I think we initially started with seventy percent, and I appreciate you all saying ramp it up a little more. And we did, we did that. So it had, we had eighty percent, we had parent permissions. Note the tardies, which was not really not that big of a deal. Our senior classes very, very strong. And they really appreciate these opportunities that y'all provided them. So most of the things with seniors comes down to, do we have to have any difficult conversations? We had, I think, seven students qualify or take us up on that early release, late start. And as we progress through, we had to have a little sit down ramp Thanksgiving, before Thanksgiving, thanks Dr. Meyer. We have seven total students who took it. So five students, we had to have a sit down with them and take a look at where their current grades are, not that they're doing poorly, but a few students need to refocus and buckle down through Thanksgiving break and through December, so they can get themselves back to eighty percent for some of those courses. So we currently have as two students right now, they're doing the early release, five students, I would say lost that privilege, but are back in school, going through the full scope of having study hall, having Mrs. Westgate available in the morning, having time to focus and recalibrate. I took a quote there in the bottom from a student. This student said, this is words, word for word, loves the opportunity to have the option to arrive late. It keeps me motivated, he said, to keep my grades up. It's been my best grades thus far in high school. That's pretty neat. Now we're going to get into ninth grade MTSS. Here's our current breakdown of our ninth, our ninth grade. So who are our students in algebra? We have forty one students currently taking algebra. Of those students, we have six students who are in Keystone Exam Support. So we have MTSS there, there, because they weren't proficient in the spring keystone. So those half dozen students are very intensive on MTSS for algebra. And then we have fewer students, much fewer students in MTSS for language arts. But because we've doubled down very hard on algebra, very hard on math this, this past year, language arts does kind of spiral. It builds upon ninth grade and tenth grade to eleventh grade. So there's a lot of those things that can get pushed in to the LA courses where we really spent a lot of effort into MTSS for algebra. Think next year, we'll have to look at it being a little more intentional with how we use connections for some of those freshmen that need supports for reading. But for this year, by doubling down on a really hard algebra, we're probably going to be a little more intentional for connections or two with some of those students who need language art supports. It's really hard, twenty seven periods of the day to get these kids out, plus give them the gym class they need, the FCS they need, research and design they need. So it's, we're looking at how we can be a little more intentional with that for next year, give those kids those time slots. And also when you schedule those kids for connection, sometimes it gets challenging, because your juniors and seniors who are in those more rigorous science courses also need that teacher for something as well. So it's kind of find that balance as you go. So this is forty one TSS for algebra. What? What courses were they in the grade? I would say the majority of them were in a pre-algebra course. The math is essentially the algebra. So nearly all of those students would have. You look, there's, you're going to see some, some, they're going to jump out at you for a second there, but what I want to show is there's fourteen students who are currently move specifically ahead of time, who are having some challenges with freshman, fourteen students, we moved intentionally to a connection teacher, which also made us jockey some of the schedules around for the connections teaching themselves. So students can be pushed elsewhere that didn't need to be there. And our decision required by nine grade team meetings. So how to make the decisions, there's all sorts of data we can pull. We have Alex, which is an online platform. You have CDT, we have Star, or there's a lot of language that we all familiar with. Algebra plus MTSS, algebra plus essentially is ensuring that your algebra plus is giving intentional time to a group of students who need, I think the pacing of, of algebra by having algebra plus allows us that time to work with those students at a little slower pace. And we, we have push and support there, special education to Paris. We do that right there. Algebra one academic MTSS, that's more your traditional algebra one academic at the pacing wise. They too have skills and needs and deficits, but we can move it a little faster clip with that algebra one academic MTSS base. And then we also have students who came up to us from the middle school, who like Mr. Chen said, last year were eighth grade, they call eighth grade math. All of, most students are in what's called eighth grade math. It's essentially pre-algebra. So it's, yes, thank you. So eighth grade math. There are about thirty five students who did not need an MTSS. They went right from eighth grade to, to algebra. So they don't have that extra time building, they're scheduled for that, that algebra foundation stills in. Any questions so far? Here's our remote breakdown. As you can see, with about half the students, thirty and twenty nine, that other group of twelve were pretty intensive when, where we scheduled them, where we have them placed and the support we have around them. Did you expect this numbers to hold all year or is this something that? I hope by, I think that the half dozen kids, I hope we see some progress when we get the Keystone results, but unfortunate thing is there's a winter window of December, early December, and there's a window that when we get back from Christmas break, we don't get those results until after Valentine, sometimes later than that. But what we are seeing is students can progress and work their way out of this. And what we hope to see is students who are working their way out of like a math one eighty, even a we would call it an intervention math, students are working their way out of math intervention by moving some of those students to progress out of an MTSS, we can make some room for the students working their way up out of a math one eighty. In official math section.
Do we have any ninth graders who are at a tenth grade level or manage sometimes?
We have, we have one section, two sections. Well, we have two sections of honor geometry. I don't know what percentage of those, there are a number of students in ninth grade who are taking honor geometry. And they are, I mean, their, their students took after one in eighth grade. So I don't know the numbers on how many that is. Fourteen and thirteen, I believe it is. Because enough for us to split it. Yeah. I didn't know if they were all, I guess they are. I didn't know if they were all ninth graders or some of them were tenth graders. They probably all be. They're probably just. Yes, sir. Because there's a geometry, geometry academic, which is a sophomore, it could be sophomore, but also it could be some freshman, but you're but I, I know what you're alluding to from maybe a half dozen years ago. We don't have, not in the last couple of years, but we had a group or two come down. We had a student a couple of years last year come down or two years ago come down, but not in the last couple of years, like you're alluding to, or that I assume you're alluding to. That's when eighth graders take. Yes, sir. So here's example tier one. I'm sure Mr. Lynch spoke to this. It's in, in algebra, it's giving students, or here's LA, we can push in some of the LA supports, and they can do close reading. She can pit pause on what they're doing and say, we got to get back to this. We got to learn it. Get back, they do small groups. I observed this in, in her classes, where the students work in pairs, and sometimes she reteaches and gets back to the really basics. But LA can really do that, which is very, very nice. Sometimes with that Keystone at the end of this race, they know it's there and every day matters. There's a pace to it. It's a pace, there's an expectation to it as well. Here's our updates. I'll let you guys, let you all digest this. Briefly here. So here's our enrollment. What you'll see down here, we can see total, here's how we're going to take a moment. This year, there are some challenges that we're facing. This is a, a really good group, but we have some students who have some needs, just like any year. So when you take a look at this number first, you think right away, how are we doing? But there are years when they start off learning the ropes of freshman, learning the rope of the high school, takes some time. It's time to figure out how we, how we do things with expectations of Keystone exams. That's an expectation for all of us. So as you take a look at these things, we're seeing some numbers, really able to address these numbers. And if you look into what we see here from that number looks very high, you were able to really take a look at some of the students and the needs that they had, and the supports that they're getting here, that number doesn't concern us as much right off the bat. Now, as we continue to monitor them very closely, we hope to have more, we hope better understanding in the second quarter. And if you look at some of the students, when we put in the report, we run zero to fifty nine, fifty nine being a failure. There was a lot of students, not, not, not high fiving myself, a lot of students with a fifty six or fifty seven in that number, that with some proper supports and the right effort, with freshman teachers are here, that makes students successful, to give them a win and to show them how to be successful. There are, I, I feel very confident and strong about what we're seeing. Questions in there? Can you, can you explain what those numbers are actually for? Oh, yes. So what you see right here, those are the, this, the quarter one, quarter one, where we're sitting right now. We have fifteen students who are failing a, an encore course. Okay. This exact time last year. There's seventy failures total. Yes, sir. So you look, oh my gosh, that number, what we see, we're being very intentional with what we're seeing doesn't concern us, because ten or twelve students right off the bat can get us down to a different level. But I feel very strongly what we're doing, where we're heading.
What is the unique number of students across this? Because I'm, I'm just guessing that, you know, someone could be failing multiple classes.
That's true. So what do you need to help me, Mr.? How many students is it not? Like seventy is representing classes, courses, right? But unique numbers, meaning, like, you know how and we kind of know this, we've seen it, but there's probably four that are almost in every one of those. Oh, yes, sir. Right? And so they.
So we know it's at least seventeen, because the largest is science with seventeen, but.
Some of them have like four or five courses, some are retaking again. Yeah, but you don't, you don't know the unique number off top of your head. No, I don't. So grab that and we'll send it out forward afterwards.
And I'd be curious to compare that to last year, because again, it's not that we have seventy students out of a hundred fifteen that are failing something. I would guess probably have seventeen to twenty five.
I will share that unfortunately, some of those unique numbers are the same because of them at grade again. But that's what the asterisk means is that there are some that, you know, where there would. If I look at a list, I don't think of them as ninth graders, but they are technically credits, you know. So. Yeah, I mean, so you have a lot of things going on here, right? We have a larger class, but we have the increased expectation of the academic versus general, you know, that's the main change that occurred, right? So with those, with those instances, we definitely have an increase of failures, you know, in that system. I think it's probably, it looks a little bit slightly larger than it actually is, just because again, you have more students in the class, and there's some repeated offenders there from year to year, but the processes that they're working through to try to remediate that, you know, where, where the real work is done. And that's why we're going to continue to track it that way. This is the, the unique numbers. Just as a general comment too, I, I mean, the increase in failures, yeah, it's definitely something that's, that's worth noting. However, I'm, I personally would rather see more failure numbers in that that's indicating that the standard is, is being high instead of, because one of the things that I had a concern about was that we were, it would have ultimately by default end up pulling that standard down. So that shows that it's where, at least it indicates that we're holding that standard up. So I would, to an extent, expect that. That's, that's definitely the intention. And I think we're seeing some evidence that that's working in a lot of places and some places, you know, as you see, it's not. Another thing to point out though is look at that encore number. There's no change in the way, there's no change in levels at encore, but yet we still see fairly similar proportional increase. Right? So that's, that's an interesting number to look. There are no levels, levels of encore outside of, there's some levels in music, et cetera, but they're not the same type of levels. And here's the senior, the senior, senior seminar. Our senior seminar, this is fun. So again, we have forty kids. There's four criteria. Mrs. Westgate breaks it down into Miss Westgate, Mrs. Howard, and Mrs. Sunday have really taken this, and you can kind of find out, you can see a little bit of the personality, any one of the individual students of who they have, kind of neat. Because they have the personality, they have kind of mimics and hats off and kudos to those ladies. As I said, oh, they're building this kind of as they fly. But because they know the students oh so well, as you all do, you'll see. But I just want to get, this is what hammer home very quick before I hand it over to, I guess it's a down for a second. But Mr. Tim Chance had had the senior seminar, had to speak to it. I said, I would love to. I said, wait a minute, how cool would it be to have them come in? We talked about the skills they need, presentations, being on point, project management, that are all doing these things. And I can't be, can't be prouder of them than I already am. So for them to be here, but the four criteria that we're really trying to touch on for here, the self-reflection, the civic engagement. I took a couple of bullet points. I didn't have the one student come here, but fascinating, this student is literally looking at apartments because they're ready to move out. So how is, how are they going to monitor this process? They're looking at getting a lease, but they're eighteen or nineteen. So all these things are taking place. These are real life things these students are wrestling with and trying to figure out. Civic engagement, all the partnerships, a lot of the students are going to touch on this momentarily, and then the future readiness, this is another student who said that she already has a research and process of writing an apartment. This is actually happening. This is on her slide. I could have brought her in, but she was busy. And then the capstone component is taking everything that they've learned, let's say by Easter time, and presenting this in a portfolio. They'll have one nice thing to say, this is what I accomplished in my senior year, senior set. Here are just a, to scratch the surface of building our partnerships, building connections for students. Some of the things that's really fascinating to me is I sit here, Mrs. Westgate, well, let me make a call, and she said, no, no, that's not our job. It's their job. So they're having to navigate this. They're figuring out how to the knock on the door over at gifts and things, how to look at their schedule and build that out so they can go over there, work that process themselves. I think I mentioned this, maybe just in a board update, so first Commonwealth, you know, was a, a local partner that were exploring their financial literacy resources. This is one of the instances, we're going to pilot a couple lessons in eighth grade, and then also here in the senior seminar course, because they seem to invest a lot of money into their educational performance. So excited to see how that plays out. We're going to expand that partnership, we'll write back to the board. As a program for working on the good ride. Who was that helping harvest? Or, we have a box with like two, two hundred boxes with that meal for Thanksgiving. So soon we were over there and helping harvest, but our students are everywhere, and they're making a contribution. All right, I'm going to be quiet for a moment and let introduce yourself, please. All right, speak to what you're doing. Do you want to, do you think you pass out? We can pass some things out.
Yeah, I can start, since I'm kind of piggybacking off the helping harvest thing. So I did it with a group of two other students, unfortunately, they couldn't be here. But I'll start handing stuff out. That one for you guys. We ran a food drive.
Do you mind introducing yourself to the group?
Yes, sorry. I'm Kaden. I'm a senior. And obviously, I'm taking the senior seminar class, and this is our senior seminar project, and we decided to run a food drive with helping harvest. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that while I hand them out. So obviously, to start this, we had to reach out to helping harvest. So I think that's one of the key skills that we've learned is communication and networking. I mean, even right now, like, we're using this as an opportunity to get our stuff out here to you guys, which was a great opportunity. So as you see up there, we also have donate for donuts, which is kind of our incentive to get the high school involved. Because unfortunately, not all high school students are going to want to just come in and bring a and, you know, bringing food, as you can see, we have a bunch of lists of stuff. So going to the store, getting all this stuff and bringing it in is sometimes not exactly the most enjoyable thing. So we did a donate for donuts. We're going to put it on the morning announcements. Hopefully, it will bring in more kids and hopefully get more people to donate. And then you can also see we have an online donation. One of the things we had to really work on, since there are a lot of groups doing food drives and a lot of clubs have done food drives over the years. So we had to try to come up with a different way to expand it more. So with helping harvest, we communicated with them and we created a website. So as you can see on the flyers, we have a QR code there. If you scan it, it'll take you to a website. So instead of going to the store and bringing stuff in, you have the option to just scan that and you can donate directly from there. And another huge thing is this is not only for helping harvest, helping harvest, we've spoken with them, they also distribute to a bunch of local food banks around here. So this could help our local community, because France, that's the one in France. They'll distribute some of the food there and to a couple of other food banks in the surrounding counties as well.
That was something we discussed, how are we local, like in our, in our backyard, how are we doing that? And that's already set up. And we can use, we can, we go right through helping harvest to help, to help down our local, our pantry here. Good stuff. Well done.
Okay, so I also have a partner that couldn't be here today, but our idea was to.
Your name?
Um.
Who names?
Oh, I'm Hannah. Sure. My partner is Alex Klass. Our idea was to make activity bags for the kids in the Blue High Valley Children's Hospital. Um, because, you know, when, when kids are there for a while, they tend to, it tends to be hard on them and their families. So just having some games and just like toys and activities to play with can really help go a long way.
What are some of the things that you and your counterpart are contemplating? Were you trying, yeah?
So we actually have a meeting tomorrow at Gifts and Things to see if there. We actually have a meeting tomorrow at gifts and things to see if they're willing to help. Either donate some funds or donate actual items so that we can put these bags together. And. So until we do that, we're at a little bit of a standstill, but we're also looking at other fundraising opportunities so that we can like. Get this together. So. One of our ideas is to put a donation box in here as well as. Just like get word out to as many people as possible so they can either bring stuff here or bring it to us directly. So we can start assembling these kits.
And they're good Lehigh Valley Hospital.
Yeah, so we would take them there directly.
Part of the process is the students bringing these ideas, through Miss Westgate to bring ideas to me. Where we're running, not running a challenge, but the kids are having a process is. If let's just say they need fifty to a hundred, a hundred dollars. It starts, I mean, they have the time, have the energy, they have the kind of want to. But if they're fifty, a hundred hours to really get them started. Do we do fundraisers for every one of those things? Or how do we help provide those, these, this group of students if they were to submit a grant? Or to a committee, do we have a way to? Have some funds to allow them, see money, if you want to get them off the ground, not thousands of dollars, but if they're fifty to a hundred dollars. This project, how can we help the students use their time and energy to make this come to fruition?
I'm Shannon White, this is Addie. Two of our group members couldn't be here today, but we are also working with Chris Bergstrom and Huna, who is a feature shooter from Belgium this year. I'll come around and pass out these. Our project is. We are trying to get a lot of people from the community, it's in the camp, it sounds pretty crap, the community. All the crocheters. To crochet granny squares, which are just little squares that she's passing out right now. And. Our goal is to get. We're estimating about a hundred to two hundred maybe, and then. We have thirty per each blanket. We want to make baby blankets to donate to. Put all the granny squares together and make baby blankets to donate to the NICU at Lehigh Valley Hospital.
What's something you said about as far as the fund? The funding for this may not be as challenging as we think because.
Yeah, so the unique thing about our project is that. You know, a lot of these other groups need grants to get their project off the ground. But ours is more of like a community effort, you know, I crochet, I have a lot of just leftover yarn. So what I'm hoping is that people from the community that already know how to crochet and already have these materials can just, you know. Without a granny square in a few minutes and donate. Donate that and it's not a whole lot of money. I mean, yarn only costs like four dollars a skein and you can make. I don't know, like ten granny squares per skein of yarn. So it's pretty cost efficient and I think that would be. Pretty appealing to people looking to donate since they don't have to donate money or go out and buy food or whatever.
Ground sourcing. So I, the projects themselves, and this is, you know, the intent, so you know, some of the things going into the intention here is like, what are the skills that you learn as a part of the project? Rather than the outcome. These are all wonderful ways to help your community and I think that's what makes it fun and engaging. But what might you say are some of the skills that you learned or had to practice? Because most of them probably aren't new things you never. Had to do, but it's, it's putting into practice in a, in a realistic way. What, what would you say has been valuable, a valuable learning experience?
Probably networking. I mean, if you look on the posters, we're partnering with local folk over on Main Street. So we've got, been in contact with Kathleen Walk who owns it and we're setting up donation boxes inside of the store. Me and Addie are actually going to go around town afterwards and hang up posters and. Hopefully, and we have an email there. So you know, if people have any questions, they can email us. But I, I think that's a pretty useful. Skill that we're learning.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I appreciate that. And it's that we. Going into the projects like, you know, these projects are all very successful and that is wonderful from a vision standpoint. There are some instances where a failed project would be just as valuable, right? Because you would have had to make all the same contacts and maybe for some reason it didn't work out. But what we really want to see students do is interact with adults, not your parents, your teachers, right? Like in some way, shape or form, just have to make a phone call, go visit a business, whatever it might be. And then learn, well, it could kind of be categorized as almost like project management skills, right? Like let's set up a plan and let's follow through. With it. And that's, that's really what I think. Those are kind of the real skills of the process and what we're seeing as a value. So. You guys want to, Hannah, Kaden, do you want to comment on that? Or would you say the same skills are, are what you have found was valuable?
I think for sure networking, communication. I know for my group, we had to go through the whole process of. First reaching out to helping harvest and then we obviously had to create that website. So it took a lot of creativity too. We had to kind of think outside the box instead of. Doing the same thing that everyone else has been doing for. Who knows how long with all these food drives going on. So I think adding that. Extra step, adding that online option was really the most important thing that we've done. And the best thing that we've learned.
Yeah, with, with fundraising and coming up with different ideas for how we can. Gain resources. It was definitely challenging because there's so many projects going on all at once. There's at least like. Three or four donation boxes in a lot of the rooms in school right now. So. Coming up with. Okay, like where can we partner with? How can we? Like figure this out, different activities to get students involved in that would raise funds is. Has been one of the bigger challenges.
Yeah, I think that's absent to one of the, the problems that we have to solve as an organization for the, you guys are, you know, you are, you're the first group coming through and we're going to learn so much from it. Is that how do we structure this in a way that's not everybody at one time? You know, we joke like all of a sudden there's twelve knocks on the door of how can you help me get my project done? But that's, that's one of the skills we want. But how do we set it up? So whether they're staggered or whether we group them, you know, intentionally kind of group them a little bit differently and see how that works, but just. Love what you're doing, love to see the successes of them. We also then have to organizational look at and see how, we also have to prevent it from becoming, you know, big sale of the day, right? Like where it's, because that can't be, raising money can't always be the goal, even though sometimes it is. And we've discussed some options, I've, you know, previous experience I worked with where. We set up a limited fund that we called like a micro loan fund and then there was a, a club. Kind of, it was definitely a club that kind of did things like this and they could apply for a micro loan. With the intention, part of it is they'd set up a business plan where they would say how they would pay that part of the loan back and it goes back into the fund. But that's kind of that seed money. So if you're looking to donate something that does cost money. You might be able to raise some funds to do that. So maybe some version of that. And you know, maybe engaging our partners, the education foundation might be a way to do that, you know, so I think. Some of those lessons that we are learning through the process, I think are going to help. Kind of even make it a better opportunities in the future because we'll solve some of those problems.
They're good problems to have, aren't they? Like they're, they're so, you guys are so active and so engaged. They're good things for us to, to fun figure out.
I had a few questions and comments, but really a lot of that stuff was covered. So I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't be looking to, to find more. It's, this sort of thing is, it's very challenging for kids. And. To actually go through it for the first time. Basically what I was thinking was, you know, essentially specific struggles that you guys hit. And then ultimately, you know, how you adopted. To, adapted to, to meet those same things and you guys covered a lot of that stuff. But then ultimately, and again, you don't, I'm not asking you for feedback on this to put you on the spot or anything, but. The idea of. What would you guys do if there was anything for the next year, you know, like specific suggestions? That you guys learned out of this or things that you see from a lot of what you're doing is an adult. Typically would do all the, the backend organizational pieces. So you're seeing now how challenging some of the stuff is because the idea looks. Really good on paper, but then you see how you run into these little challenges because of all these little things. I don't know if you want to comment on any of that stuff or not, but it's just really more or less just a, a big. Great job for this stuff because it is. You just learn so much from the process.
It would be really exciting if maybe all of the students who are looking for donations with the different groups came together and maybe. Could include something in cougar prints which goes out to the community. And you know, here's all of the senior projects and six opportunities or ten opportunities to donate. So that the community gets more awareness and method as well.
We'll have it done tomorrow.
Well, let them work.
The, the hospital donations, very interesting. Concept, it happens a lot. Either one of you, I have a really good friend who operates Lily's Hope. For preemies. Where they're near, they're, they're across the country now. They started back in two thousand and thirteen. They help hundreds of families every year. If either one of you. Would like to talk to her regarding how they started and how they set it up, I'm sure that I can get you in contact. So just let me know.
Thank you, thank you.
If I could just ask you one more thing, I think, you know, while we're here. You all have different teachers?
We have the same teacher.
Okay, so we represent two of the three and not to leave one out, but just. It, you know, the teachers have taken on a new class as well and, and our, you know, just if you could share. Kind of one sort of shout out to the, to your teacher about something, not necessarily related, it could be related to the projects, but it could be. Just anything from the senior seminar class and you've really appreciated that you've been able to kind of work through with them in this class. I would, I would appreciate that.
I mean. Are, we have Mrs. Sunday and obviously, you know, she came in later than most of the other senior seminar teachers. I think she's been doing a fantastic job. She's helped a lot with the project. I mean, she helped us print out sixty posters earlier. She's been really good with like. Guiding us. I, she, she was here for the, like. Career and like college preparation. She did really good at like, if we had any questions about adult life and stuff. You know, she was very helpful with all that.
Thank you.
So I had Miss Westgate, we both did. I would say the same about Miss Westgate, but she also, I think. Pushed us a lot to do. More than I think we thought we could do. I think I know, I, I definitely our group, I'm not sure about other groups as well, but. I think when we first went into it, we were looking for more assistance from her, from like an adult. But. She kind of put her foot down and was like, no, you guys can do this. You guys really can do this. And. We ended up being able to do a lot more than we thought we could. Just because she helped us and she helped us to get there.
I think definitely throughout this project and throughout our. Our project last quarter with our own smart goals. She's been very helpful with helping us find resources when it's been a little bit difficult. And like encouraging us to just like. Keep pushing through our blocks and once we're like. Like I really can't do this, like I can't get through this. Like nope, you got it. Here's another resource like. Keep looking. So she's been very helpful with. Just like Kate said, keeping, keeping on pushing us through.
Excellent. There are no other questions? Always thank you, you know, it does so much better to have you share what you're doing than it is for us to say what we know you're doing. So. Thank you so much for your time on a Monday night.
Thank you.
Thank you guys. And then feel free to leave. I doubt you guys should.
Thank you.
By law, just for the Atlantic of how we did this, this whole year, we're kind of building as we go, but when you have that kind of energy and they're taking the, the time. It really makes it fun already. Appreciate giving me a chance to present. Any questions? Miss Segal, I'll get through all that. Unique numbers from Q one, Q two from last fall and this fall.
Yeah, and I think, you know, in summation, there's, there's a lot of positives we're seeing from changes. There's some. You know, there's, as there always is, there's some areas where you can continue to grow and adapt, but I'm very happy. Doctor Flager, do you normally see an increase, a decrease with the amount of students that are failing throughout the year? Like last year was thirty-five, but you know, after, after the first quarter. Is it, do you? Does it normally go up, does it go down? Does it stay the same?
We'll, we'll see it go down.
It will, yeah.
Especially the student, now there'll, there'll be a handful of students who, because especially the ninth grade teachers. Understanding students how they transition in that grade. There is that time. They, they set the tone, they set the expectation. But from, let's say Thanksgiving in through Christmas and then through when we get back. The students who bring the effort, the teachers will meet the students, but they'll, they'll work their way out of that little run. As I said, there's not many students who are not in the. High F range of the fifty-five. But with a little bit of effort. They can get their way back. Up pretty quickly. Very much so.
So you'd expect a pretty significant draw?
I do expect that. Did you guys? Did you guys have or discuss or possibly in the future, any like benchmark goals for that? Like. How much we'd like to, like? What we'd like to see number wise, percentage wise, as far as. An improvement in the number of failures?
I haven't thought about it from a standpoint of. So I think it's one of the things that we're, we're, as we're watching this go and progress. We may set a little bit different expectations of, make sure we communicate with parents and with students that are coming from eighth grade and ninth grade. Here is some of the work. That is expected. Here's what you can expect. Here's some of the work you can do in advance. We'll see some, we'll help communicate some of those things a little better. But as far as benchmarks, just to track the numbers in advance, it's, it's kind of tough. Right off the bat, sure.
They're not directly related, I guess, but how's the mentor mentoring program going?
It's going well. They actually have their mentor meeting. They had individualized ones for November. And then they have their mentor meeting on Tuesday leading into Christmas.
Is this the third year?
Fourth year. Fourth year. This is the first, these seniors are the first group to have it as friends.
Third, third full year, I think, mid-year. I think you're, I think it's, it's fourth, but I think it's the, it's third full. I think you started a little bit mid-year.
Can I ask a question about the, the science curriculum that you guys?
Yes.
What is that physical science ninth grade class?
It, well, this from my social studies teacher background. Way it's broken down, the first half the year is, is chemistry. And then the second half the year is physics.
So they have chemistry and physics in ninth grade and then they have choice for chemistry and physics in their junior year?
Chemist, the, the physical sciences, the chemistry is the first part of physical science, like it's more of a chemistry component. And then. January on is more of a physics component. To the physical science.
There's no earth and space, environmental or agricultural in the curriculum?
That is, I believe that is correct. I can get some more information on that for you. I don't know if I answered. I, from my understanding, it's chemistry. Then it's physical science, physics. For second half of the year.
We had looked a few years ago at the potential of giving a choice in ninth grade and it was a, an egg focused. Potential option that really our egg teacher at the time, which was I think Mrs. Brown, maybe somebody, it's a couple, a couple of years ago. You know, looking at those options and there was some current concerns from the science department that it wouldn't prepare kids as well for. Chemistry can specifically, but looking at that as an option, because you'll see occasionally. Schools with strong egg programs will have a egg focused. Ninth grade course as an option in comparison. Appreciate the support of all of them. Very well. Thank you very much.
Alright, that, that brings us to policy part. And we have two policies. The first one is policy zero zero four for membership.
Both of these, I just reminded, came up out of conversations over the, over the past few weeks, just the questions on. Membership was more about to be looked. Did, there was a request to explore whether we want to identify a process for. Identifying candidate. When there's a vacancy and then organization is really mostly just about the academic achievement committee, which is always listed on our sheet, but doesn't meet regularly. So I don't know from a time standpoint, you know, what we want to do to start the conversation or if you want to target one or the other. I don't know, you know, with seven minutes. I don't know, you know, with seven minutes.
I would guess that oh, four is going to be more of a discussion, so maybe it'll. Get that one off, it's possibly.
Right, there's always some productivity involved, right? I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass this out to oh, five, but this is just. In this different committees and. Reserves, can I, well, for some schools.
And of course, the topics, these are not the exact names, um, these were pulled from different school districts. So the names vary, but the topics. And the organization, um, within each category, a little bit different, but overall, this, I think this pretty much hits everything that was. Throughout the county as far as topic areas.
You know that you had emailed this out ahead of time or shared it ahead and it was very valuable, um, I think that. Fully. Kind of jogged to the thinking on what reconfigurations, uh, you know, we could consider. Um, I know in the past we've talked about really wanting to. Um, plan more systematically about our long-term finances, uh, and of course, some big property decisions coming up. Um, you know, I think the. You know, one idea would be to group together. Um, curriculum and athletics, uh, activities, student services and experience of technology into one. And the student, um, experience related committee and then having. Really finance, property, operations and policy. And then another committee, which would be more, you know, getting away from purely just. I'll say maybe the short-term facility considerations, but more to the long-term property planning.
You know, when it's always going to be tough to see it go into like a box or his policy, this policy hits everything in some way, you know, so that's. That's the one it's tough to separate from, you know, either the student experience side or operations side.
Laurel, your suggestion was combining curriculum. Technology.
Yes, so curriculum, and and I kind of use this, let's from the Burke founding one, that was a little more holistic, though. My thinking was curriculum, athletics and activities. Student services, experience and technology. Uh, and then the. Other can, other major committee being. Finance. Um, operations, property and policy. You know, I was kind of grouping. Operations, policy and finance, you know, together along the property. And then I think negotiations really kind of goods with that human relations, resources. I don't know that I put public relations in with that, but I think the negotiations, human relations and resources naturally influence as well. If we wanted to consider, you know, again, realigning with the more holistic view. Given some of these reference points.
And then, of course, any changes, I mean, becomes, you know, the the offer. The ideal time to restructure is for reorganization, you know, before having a conversation right after reorganization, but obviously that's the most sense. So th- these discussions. Can it go anyway, we also could have a policy that takes effect, you get a full policy to have it take effect with reorganization next year, that's certainly. If if that large of a change was. You know, desired. My general, you know. Think I feel this way about most things, as you see other school districts do similar but different ways, any of these structures can work perfectly, but you know, it's not. It's not our way, it's not the only way, but our way is also not inherently flawed either, it's, you know, something, something else, um. Or specifically removing academic achievement committee, because it's one that sits that that we've, we have naturally folded into the curriculum, I think is, makes perfect sense. Um, as far as everything else. I think a good rationale behind this, it's just a matter of how the board wants to organize.
I'm not opposed to, obviously, there's suggestion of, my my only. My thought is we have two one-hour long meetings, we probably need to structure them in a way to get the most out of those two hours. Whatever. Format, that is maybe.
Yeah, and I still think, I mean, I do think, uh, Mrs. Ziegler's. Um, you know, her her vision of it, I think, when I look at the personality to be involved, you know, I can see those structuring well, it's just policy is the is the tough one, because. There's policies that need to go with curriculum, there's policies that need to go with. And everything.
Maybe it's splitting the policies into the kind of appropriate committee that more naturally aligns, or anything curriculum related would go into the student. You know, based one and anything property finances, capital related.
One thing I want to look at here, everything that's under the property committee. Pretty much is already discussed under the facilities committee, same as the operations and really the technology falls underneath the facilities as well.
Techs becomes such a, you know, such a challenging one to characterize, because everything involves tech at this point, well, exactly, it's just, you know, it's everything that is, so.
We already have finance with.
I was just, sorry, I was just going to say, and technology is really good. Two avenues, one's IT, which is more the operations, and then the other is tech, which is more curriculum, which I think you're talking about two different things, depending on which way you're going. Yeah. But IT, IT, the way we, you know, we really structure now probably would fall down under operations, you know, because that is the cybersecurity side, it's our infrastructure. Um, again, that's what, that is what it's still.
Yeah, and if there would be some, something with policy, we just took that away, the policy committee, though.
I think the the current facilities, uh, committee again tends to focus more on short term and I think really asking that committee to start thinking about the long-term. Property development as well as the financial implications of that, I know, again, that's, that's a great gap that we've mentioned in the past, so. I think that expansion, that committee would be a nice opportunity.
Seven oh one, it's, uh. If you guys have any other. Thoughts at this point? Were we? That guest. A lot of suggestions here and.
It is, again, it's it's not, so some needs to be immediate, and it's something that's kind of bigger, so maybe sit on it a little bit and think of it, thinking of it. Um, that gives us a starting point to really think about potential restructuring.
Any other questions or comments? At this point, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meaning adjourn.
Right, thank you, um. First, first, firstly, you left a committee chairperson, do you have any nominees for chairperson? Do you have any other nominations? Take a roll call.
Light.
Light.
Light. Light.
Light.
Congratulations.
You're looking, we got that stuff under facilities and extracurricular, uh, we'll start first with, uh, you want new facilities or extracurricular? And we have facilities listed first.
Okay, cool, yeah, okay.
Uh, first is the PCCD update.
Yeah, PCCD is the Pennsylvania Crime. Commission's. Delinquency, um, anyway, but it's a, it's where a lot of Pennsylvania state grants come through, they're typically called safety grants, um. And we have to align those. Applications, what they consider level one needs, so I'm going to be kind of vague, because there are safety grants and, you know, so safety information. Um, our last grants. Um, we did not spend everything in those categories, you know, that we have, and some, there's been some, um, security enhancements to the. Exterior of our buildings. In addition to some interior things as well. But. Uh, left us fifty-five thousand dollars short of the expenditures there. We have until April, you know, to to spend that money, but. Different than previous years, we cannot change the scope at all, you can do, you can edit your budget, can't edit your project, in previous years, you were able to edit your project or your budget, so. Um, there's some potential additional projects that will. You know, I think again, in vague ways, we we either can look to add some. Uh, additional security around the doors that we have, um. You know, and some doors, keys, locks, as we have continued to improve, you know, I'm trying to be vague with that in too detailed, um. And likely we're going to go that direction, so just. The. Part, the tough part is that we are not looking, what is it, adding expenditures, adding expenditures, we also don't like grant money on table that you can. Use to upgrade your physical property, so, um. You'll see, we'll put some information in board notes, um, this week about, I think we've narrowed down the direction we want to go. Um, just wanted to, just wanted to kind of give you a brief update, vague update on that, and that, um, we did not. We weren't able to, we just didn't expand all of the grant funding and, um. We do feel it's necessary, there's continuous potential security upgrades, but we need to narrow them into what the original project was, so we'll send some information both to the convenience board this week. That relates to the next. Item only in this way, any, the only way is that any projects are looking to get done this summer, we're going to have to start talking about, because you got to get on the calendar. Yeah, so, um, you know, that's. That sort of just relates to it there, and there's, there potentially could be some crossover projects. Um, and I'm going to give you this, if they didn't want to put it in agenda, because I don't want to give anybody, I just put it on there again, but I think we're really close to understanding. How adding the, um, gas tank on property is going to make sense for us and DCI together, so. Um, you know, we've talked about it quite a few times in recent years, and that's why, you know, but we are really close to, I think. It is going to be mutually beneficial for tw- beginning in July of twenty twenty-six with us and DCIU. Where we will be able to add that convenience mostly to us, but also will save us money, because we will be able to participate at a higher rate in the bid, because, um, because of our usage. And then also be able to assist them, because right now, DCIU is running, you know, running out to sixty-one per gas with the bus, so, um. With an agreement that, uh, you know, where we would receive a service fee for hosting, we will be able to, I think, pay for. Both the initial installation of the tank, but in addition to a key part and a key cost is the software, and you say technology goes with everything. The software key card, so we can track, including one gas, um, I think we'll be able to pay for the annual and initial over, say, you know, two to three years, just from that partnership, so. We're, I think we'll get to a good place that, um. I think we'll get to a good place that very soon, I'd say February, we'll probably have an effect on the mission. With, again, looking at probably summer. Not on the agenda, but just an update to something to talk about.
Hey, very good. Next, we have the KAMS carpet replacement.
Yep. So I know as part of the admin move into the middle school, you know, we did the minimum to start. As far as carpeting, so we did superintendent's office, we did the front main office of the district office. What I'd like to do is update. The main office, again, we're twenty-five years since the original carpet in that building. The main office is showing, you know, a lot of wear, especially when they come in. The faculty room. Add the two other district administration offices, which is room two hundred and two oh one, as well as some walk-off carpet to the district entrances of the cubby. So all that is for a total of twenty-eight thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars. That's through the vendor who did the original installation. Who's a co-stars vendor.
Is that carpet squares? So one gets damaged, we don't replace, yeah.
And also in the two hundred and two oh one, that is directly over the BCT. So, you know, those rooms are, can be quickly transferred back if we wanted the BCT on those. But, yeah, the faculty room, the main office are definitely showing, you know, where, and just kind of thought we'd hold off because of the construction. And now that's complete. Like to look at it as a, as an upgrade to that building.
Did we get any other bids for it, or we just?
No, that's a co-star vendor, so I did not, and we can, we very well can. But since it's co-stars, we typically use a vendor who we've had success with in the past.
And I'm assuming it wasn't the budget.
Well, this, this would come out of the, the capital fund. So it's not in the general fund budget.
And that capital fund's sitting at what right now?
Again, this would be something we're looking at for the summer, just to get on their, on their list, but when we could look at that. Questions, Collins?
All in favor of moving this to the full board? There I. Passes.
Unless anybody has any other questions. Just the, you know, we did have our first test with snow and parking lot with the buses, which is, do you wanna share that experience at all? Just coordination that we have to start at that building now, which would always be secondary, high school would be primary. So now we started the middle school, get that out, and then they have to. Convince people to come in to move the buses. So, and then. Clean the buses off, then we clear where those are, and then they put everything back. So it's just a little bit of a, a little bit more of a process. Before, we were all on our own, we couldn't clear it, I'll cut our pace. Now we have to coordinate, which again, it was good that the day was off, we took the. Pretty much the entire day. Of course, it started right about almost eight o'clock. So we will be cleared by eleven, but. It was fairly good process. Again, I think everything went pretty good. We'll see, up next, still on bills. Thank you.
Next, we're gonna move into the extracurricular, fall sports review.
Thank you very much. So usually we do this a little bit closer at the end of the fall season, but our last DCC meeting was also the same night as the BCIA Gold League banquet where they honor. People who have served twenty years in some capacity serving Burke County student athletes. So it's a good way to honor them. They hand out the annual sportsmanship award each year at that banquet as well. Of course, we did not win it, but we did finish in third place this year, which was up from. Where we were previously in the last year in twenty twenty-four, so good spot to be in. A couple of years where we did win that several years, three out of four years, or two out of three years. So hoping to get back there, it's always a nice recognition for the community and the student athletes here at Cootstown. But we'll do the fall wrap-up here. We'll start off, as always, with Mr. Shirk and the marching band. Obviously, always a great performance that they do every Friday night. All the kids that are involved with the marching band, we hear some of them down the hall as we're here in the meeting, but they put on a great show every year. It gets better every year, the selection that they do for their halftime shows. Always original, always creative, and, and always a good time. So thank you to Mr. Shirk and our marching band for helping make Friday night a great experience for, for the whole community.
Sticking with band, just because we shared today, Mr. Shirk had shared this afternoon that over the weekend, we had three students who auditioned for the PMEA District Ten Band Ensemble, and all three of those students qualified for the group. Carrie Bosler Wyman on clarinet, Vincent Illustre on the trombone, and Anna Nigard on trombone, and Anna also qualified for District Orchestra, since she was the second seeded overall. Out of the thirty-three trombones in the district. And district is a massive thing in band, like it's, I actually don't know, I mean, it goes all the way up to Vulcan, right? There's, I don't know how many, how many districts are.
I know, I know, we are part of District Ten.
Yeah, but it's, it's massive. It's even bigger than our athletic districts. It's bigger than, right, for athletics, just as comparison. So as always, our students, super talented, perform well. Congratulations. So we have Carrie. Vincent and. Anna for.
Next, that brings us to our cheerleaders this year. Head coach, once again, Linda Andre, volunteer coach Brittany Dealy, this year with us, we had fourteen participants at the high school, six at the middle school. And they, they, just like the marching band, add to a great Friday night experience out there for our community, our coaches, our fans, our student athletes. And they have recently been busy. Before Thanksgiving, they competed in the BCIA championships, and then just this past weekend, they competed in, in two competitions. On Saturday was the District Three Championships out at CD East High School, where they placed fifth in the co-ed division. Then yesterday, they participated in the UCA Regional, which was right down the road at Santander Arena. They finished in first place in the co-ed intermediate division. So from the District Three Championship competition, they did qualify for the PIA championship competition, which is being held January ninth and ten. This year, location, not so lucky, they were at Santander Arena last year. This year, they're going to the other side of Pennsylvania, Summit Arena in Johnstown, PA. So it seems to be maybe, maybe next year, we'll be back here on the side of the state. But congratulations to our cheerleading team for, for their recent success and good luck to them out at States. At least we have our golf team. Once again, Michael, Michael Air and Bernie Boyle leading the helm for our golf team this year. Finished one of fourteen, tied for seventh place in Burke's Division Two. We had ten boys participating this year. Some postseason highlights. Daniel Yurka Junior for us was BCIA All Division Two team. He had a seventh place finish in double A boys at the BCIA championships. And another junior, Andrew Gilbert, was Burke's Division Two Honorable Mention, and we had. Daniel going out to the District Three Championship meet out at Honey Run Golf Club. For another year, second year in a row for Daniel, so he has one more year to compete with us. So Andrew. Had some success last year, and we look for both of them to return next year, maybe get a couple more kids out to District Three Championship tournament out at York next year. Our girls tennis team, a lot of success this year. Luann Repard is our head coach, along with her assistant, who she knows very well, Dale Repard. Volunteer coaches Nick Weber, Tom Welling, Sue Sheridan, and Tracy Manley. We also had our own Aaron Angle helping out as a van driver for us. Overall, this season, they finished thirteen and four. They were seven one, seven and one in the league. Good enough for second place in Burke's Division Two. They were four and three in the postseason. So they were a Burke's team semifinalists this year. District Three team, third place finish. They were, and the PIA team qualifier for the first time in program history. They competed in that match all the way up in Saps Williamsport, not too far from Little League World Series location up there. It's a, it's an indoor facility. The, the same facility that, that Bucknell uses in cold weather time up there. Madeline Manley and Clara Angle. Their doubles team, they were like one doubles, silver medalist this year, losing to Wilson Doubles Team, and they were District Three. Two-way double semifinalists. They were the number one overall seed this year in the District Three tournament. So we had eight girls participating this year, and some postseason recognition. Madeline Manley Senior was named a BCIA All-Conference Team, and Kenzie Burns, sophomore. BCIA All-Division Two team. So congratulations to our tennis program for all the success that they had this fall. Our boys and girls cross-country team. Our head coach Shelby Brett and middle school coach Kelsey Yob. We had nine participants at the high school level, seven boys and two girls. And four at the middle school level, split the half, two boys and two girls. Some postseason recognition, Daniel Calia Junior for us. Was named to Burke's All-Division Two team. He finished fourteenth overall at the Burke's Championships, right down the road at Cootstown University. Finished in fifth place at the District Three Championship meet, and was a PIA double A qualifier this year for the second year in a row. And we had Egan Sewell Junior also qualified for the District Three Championships, along with Owen McFarlane, another junior at the District Three Championships. And we also had Lena Catley on the girl's side, sophomore this year, was Burke's Division Two Honorable Mention. And she qualified for District Three Two Way Championship Race, along with freshman Zoe Balone. Named Burke's All-Division Two team, and also qualified for the District Three Championship Race. So congratulations to our cross-country team. Girls soccer, our own middle school guidance counselor, Keegan White, is our head coach, along with the teacher here in the high school, Alan Engstadt, as the assistant. Middle school coach is middle school teacher, Matt Brown. Regular season, they finished seven and eleven overall, four and eight in the league, and they finished in third place in Burke's Division Four. We had twenty-three girls at the high school, sixteen at the middle school this year. Some Burke's postseason recognition, we had Jaden Garris. Senior named to Burke's All-Division Four team, along with Carter Deal, a senior, again on the Burke's All-Division Four team, and Ava Cuts, a junior. The Burke's All-Division Four team, and AJ Blank is senior, Burke's Division Four Honorable Mention this year. Congratulations to our soccer team. Split. Soccer right now, we're gonna throw on some slides about our football team. Head coach again, Larry Chester, assistant coaches, brother Maurice Cuadrado Chester, Matt Lawhorn, Carlton Thomas, and Kenny Kramer. Big volunteer coach Jonathan Rodriguez, an intern from Cootstown University, Nicholas Perez, and middle school coaches, Alvin Clark and Steve Kircher. Regular season, they finished two and eight, one and six in the league, were a seventh place finish in Lancaster Lebanon League Section Five. We had thirty-six participants this year, twenty of those from Cootstown, sixteen from Brandywine at the high school level. On the middle school level, we had twenty-one total, fourteen from Cootstown, and seven from Brandywine. The postseason recognition, this is all from the Lancaster Lebanon League, because Burke's All-Stars usually take a little bit longer to get all their names out. So we have Lancaster Lebanon League. Section Five All-Star recognition here, we have Mason Sherry, a senior. He was named the Section Five Offensive Back of the Year, in first-team offense and first-team defense for outside linebacker. Ryan Walters, a sophomore, was named second-team offense as a running back and honorable mention as a kick returner. Ian Bar, a senior, second-team offense as a pullback, honorable mention as an outside linebacker. Aiden Showers, a junior, second-team offense as an offensive lineman, second-team defense as an inside linebacker. Jack Moriarty, a senior, honorable mention as a kicker. Jaden Martin, another senior, honorable mention as a defensive end. Isaac Wood, a senior, honorable mention as a punter, and Tyler Wiki, senior, as an honorable mention as a long snapper. And then we have a list of players here, named for Burke's academic all-stars. This is something put together by the coaches in Burke's County. We had twenty-three members of our football team named in Burke's Academic All-Star Team. Qualification for this is to have a GPA of three point oh or higher. So congratulations to our list of student athletes here, Hunter Amato, Ian Bar, Roy Spittner. Dennis Brown, Hunter Cooper, TJ Engelhardt, Nick Huntsberger, Charles Judson, Connor Couch, Jackson Blowman. Levi Martin, Robert Meister, Jack Moriarty, Colton Renninger, Bryson Schiffler, Max Schoyer. Brother Ronan Schoyer, Mason Sherry, Aiden Showers, Wyatt Stess, Daniel Padley, Ryan Walters, and Tyler Wiki. So not only putting in the work on the field, but also in the classroom as well. So congratulations to the boys there. And then, nice historic accomplishment here, I believe for only the third time in Pennsylvania high school football history. Mason Sherry, Ian Bar, and Ryan Walters, teammates, three teammates on one team, each rushing for a thousand yards this year, the same season. The Mason rushed for thirteen hundred and fifty-one yards and nine touchdowns. Ryan rushed for one thousand thirty-one yards and thirteen touchdowns, and Ian Bar just got it in the last game, one thousand eight yards and ten touchdowns. But congratulations to these boys here for a great season. Our boy soccer team, head coach Jared Deal and assistant coach Isaac Mengel, our middle school coaches, Don Buchi and assisted, assisted by Jim DeDeLanti. Regular season, they finished fourteen, three, and one, nine, two, and one in the league. They finished fourteen, five, and one overall. So that was good enough for back-to-back-to-back Burke's Division Four champions. They were also qualified for the Burke's playoffs. They were quarterfinalists, losing in that round, and then we hosted the District Three Quarterfinals there. Didn't come out on top against Cooper Valley, a hard fought game there. But we had thirty-three participants at the high school level, twenty at the middle school level this year. So congratulations. To our boys soccer team for winning another division championship. It's another great season for them. And then just kind of wrapping up here, we have two. Head, oh, I'm sorry. Postseason recognition, Chase Schuler, senior, Burke's All-Conference Team this year, Kayden Chacony, another senior. BCIA All-Division Four team, Dane Lassito, and his brother Cade Lassito. Both named to Burke's All-Division Four team, Ashton Bitner, another senior, Burke's Division Four Honorable Mention, and Chase Morrell, sophomore, Burke's Division Four Honorable Mention. And so as I was saying before, I just wanna make a, a mention, we have two head coaches that have resigned this fall. Just looking to do some other things with, with their time. Our girls tennis coach, Luann Repard, of course, our husband as well, Dale Repard. Looking to finally take some time for themselves, still gonna be coaching the boys team this spring, and I think for the next couple of years, but there are some things that they wanted to take care of. From their side of things and the ball, free up some time there. So they've chosen to step away from the girls team to kind of. Have some more personal time for them and their family. So very, show a lot of gratitude to them for all the hard work that they've done throughout the years. They're still gonna be big into the tennis community here at Cootstown.
Luann and Dale are tennis in Cootstown, yes, it's the reality, everybody plays somehow, is very, very connected with them. So thank, thank you to them for their continued, but. For also long-time commitment to our students and tennis.
Absolutely. I think even though they're, even when they step away, they're still not gonna truly step away. And then also our boys soccer coach Jared Deal has chosen to resign. His, his youngest daughter, Carter, a senior with us. She is going to be playing soccer somewhere in college, hasn't made her decision next year, but he also has a son who is a freshman, playing college soccer as well. So that tends to eat up a lot of time moving forward over the next couple of years. So obviously can completely understand Jared wanted to see. His children play some collegiate soccer and, and cheer them on. So just wanna say a special thank you to Jared Deal for five years of tremendous service and. Building the program up to the level that is, that it's at right now. Very respectable, high expectations every year with our boys soccer program, and a special thank you to Jared for that.
Do you have a timeline for identified candidates for two of them?
Preferably, I would like to potentially have soccer lined up before the winter is over. Our assistant coaches, Isaac Mengel and our middle school coach, Don Buchi, are very close with Jared. They're running our winter program right now to keep that going. So they have a great rapport with, with the boys, obviously great rapport with Jared. And everything that they've done over the past five years, but hopefully we get some good list of candidates and get that filled as soon as possible. Same with the girls, I think, I think we'll have. Some good candidates for girls tennis as well, some people that, you know, probably recommended by, by people around the, the community. So hopefully have that built in a good decent amount of time as well. Anybody have any questions, comments? Just wanna say great job to all the coaches, great job to all the student athletes. And sad to see the coaches leaving, but totally understand as well, too. So maybe they can give some input as to take over the reins. Yes, with that, for motion to adjourn. Favor?